[inaudible][1795.94-1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94][1796.94]
I don't know.
I thought they turned the cameras off.
Wayne Valley's Blue and Nelson's Maroon, if I see Raddick, they'll all out of there.
Starve. We lost the board members.
That's all right. We can do that though.
Yeah. Where did Stacy go? I know. Yeah, no, I...
You've got to be hitting the ball in the left. Since when, since when, he's started with the ball? No, Clark was at five. He just, they just... Yeah, like, I think we should have stopped drinking. I said, I feel happy. They all... Please, we need to have a demonstration. What did he got? He's a student. Sorry.
Just waiting. Okay. We are going to resume to Dr. Tobak's administrative summary.
Okay, so my report this evening is relatively brief, but there is some very exciting news. First of all, I'm very happy to announce that Newsweek announced their list of top 5,000 schools in the United States for STEM education. And so I'm very happy to report that Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley were ranked among the top schools in the United States for STEM. And when you consider that there are approximately 27,000 high schools in operation in the United States, that places both of our high schools in the top 7% of all high schools nationally in STEM education. So that's really quite an accomplishment. So congratulations to our students, our teachers, our administrators of both of our high schools for this significant achievement. And also, a press release will be distributed tomorrow providing more details about this accomplishment. I'd also like to mention that Wayne Hills High School was awarded a Health and Wellness Grant. So Chilton Medical Center has a community advisory committee that awarded a $2,500 Health and Wellness Grant to Wayne Hills for the creation of a wellness room in Wayne Hills Media Center. Wayne Hills High School Media Specialist Kristen Caldwell wrote and presented the grant application. The room will be an electronics-free space called the Zen Den for the students to unplug from devices and reconnect to each other or take quiet time for themselves. In alignment with the Board of Ed Wellness Initiative, this unique space is designed to counteract anxiety and give students a respite from their daily stressors. Also, I'd like to just take a moment to thank the Wayne Education Foundation for the Denim and Diamonds Gala. So that was held earlier this week. All of the proceeds will be reinvested in the Wayne Township Public Schools. And this is a very exciting event that so many people from the community enjoyed. And it was really, in addition to raising a tremendous amount of money for the Wayne Township Public Schools, it brought the school community together, which was really a wonderful thing. Also, I'd like to just mention that on Friday, at Old Topan High School, Wayne Valley will be playing in the state finals for Group Four. That begins at six o'clock. For the HIB report, during this reporting period, there were eight incidents reported as HIB after thorough investigation. One of those cases was found to be an actual case of HIB.
Thank you, Dr. Tobak. And now we will have our student representative reports.
Congratulations to the Wayne Hills Patriot Marching Band on a fantastic final weekend of competition. On Saturday, October 26th, the band placed first in Division Three with awards for Best Guard and Best Percussion and a score of 91.7. On Sunday, October 27th, the band won first in Division Four with awards for Best Music, Best Guard, Best Percussion, and Superior Rating. The band won Best Overall Band, Best Guard Overall, and Best Percussion Overall. Twenty members of the Wayne Hills Leo Club traveled to Jersey City for the annual Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation Walk on Saturday, October 19th. Every year, the Leos join Matthew Corsero's team Miracle for Matthew. This year, the students raised $400 for JDRF, which pledges to find a way to cure juvenile diabetes and make Type One, Type None. Students enjoyed the 5K Walk in beautiful Liberty State Park, although some chose to run it instead. Great job, Leos. This week is Wayne Hills Spirit Week. This yearly tradition is designed to foster a sense of charity and caring within our school community. Our school collects money, food, and gift cards during the course of the week, with the proceeds going to the PTO, Food Bank, Eva's Village, and a local charity, and 30-plus Wayne Hills families. And finally, the Wayne Hills Gymnastics Team are the Passaic County Champions, and their coach, Kathy Peter, was the Gymnastics Coach of the Year. Also, the Wayne Hills Girls Tennis Team are Passaic County Champions for the 17th year in a row.
Thank you.
Wayne Valley had its signing day on November 13th. Michael Bleeker signed with American University Men's Soccer. Arden Lumbric signed with Mount St. Mary University Women's Soccer. And Nicholas Mancuso signed with University of South Carolina Aiken Baseball. The girls volleyball team won New Jersey Group Three sectional championships and ended their season with a 24-5 overall record. The marching band is hoping to continue their undefeated regular season as they enter their championship weekends with their production, The Throne. Sophomore Eliza Kissoliva became the number-one girls tennis player in Passaic County after dethroning the two-time champion in the finals. In terms of clubs and activities, FBLI is in the midst of their annual Gertrude Hawk Chocolate fundraiser and is preparing for state competitions. The Model UN is working on developing solutions for the Hong Kong protests. The Smoke Signals Student Newspaper recently published their fall issue and is currently working on their winter. The Wayne Valley Theater community had a huge success with their production of Almost Mean, which took place from November 14th to 16th. This was enjoyed by the entire Wayne community. The TV classes have released the school year's first edition of The V. In late October, students from marketing classes presented strategy recommendations to former Toys R' Us managers. In addition, AP Government students worked on creating political parties centered on issues like infrastructure, gun reform, and more. Lastly, Wayne Valley is currently in the midst of their Spirit Week. This is intended to promote school spirit and cohesion, and is military-themed, with each day of Spirit Week assigned a related dress-up theme. Spirit Week will be culminating in a pep rally and homecoming tomorrow, Friday, November 22nd.
Thank you. And we have a presentation to make.
So at this time, I'd like to introduce Gina Fermi, who, in addition to having a presentation tonight, she's also one of our student representatives. So she's going to talk to you about student exchange programs and the globalization of education.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Gina Fermi, and I am a junior at Wayne Valley High School. And today, I'll be presenting for International Education Week with the help of the Russian-American Foundation. So this past summer, I received a full scholarship from the National Security Language Initiative for Youth, which is a Department of State initiative that promotes diplomacy and critical language learning. And through this initiative, they provide full scholarships for students to study abroad and in various different countries for eight different languages that are critical to American diplomacy and development. While there, they provide intensive language instruction, cultural activities, and host family stays. And through NISLIE and the Russian-American Foundation, which is the organization that implemented my specific program, I studied the Russian language in a summer abroad in Moscow this past summer. So while I was... The focus of the NISLIE program is language learning, and while there, we had four hours of rigorous language study every day. And our classes were taught only in Russian, and the teachers didn't know any English. So from the first day, we were forced to analyze and think about the language constantly, and we had to work with each other in order to progress in the language. And it was extremely difficult, and I chose the specific picture of my notes because on the top half are all the Russian rules, but on the bottom are all the exceptions. So we spent around half the time going over all the rules and structure of the language, but the other half was going over all the exceptions and nuances of the language, which is really difficult for me to pick up. But I really enjoyed learning the language, and I found all the intricacies of the Russian language to be really beautiful and meaningful because it was something that I genuinely enjoyed learning about, and I didn't have a lot of pressure on me since there were no grades. So I was able to progress a lot in the language through immersion and classroom learning, and it was definitely one of the most meaningful academic experiences for me. Another important part of the NISLIE program is career development. So while I was there, almost every afternoon, we were having pre-professional meetings with the embassy and top companies. There were some American-based, like Bloomberg and PepsiCo, but there were also some Russian economic strategy groups and consultancy firms. And during these meetings, we were able to discuss American-Russian relations and what it means, what the role that Russia plays in the global economy. And hearing from these really experienced and amazing executives about how important it is to learn a language, and specifically the Russian language, really helps me develop a vision for my own future. And knowing any language is so important for competitiveness and competency in the job market. And all the NISLIE languages were chosen specifically because they're critical to American markets, development, and diplomacy. So in addition to these meetings and all the different opportunities afforded to us, we also had access to the State Department Exchange Alumni Network, and we received emails from them almost on a weekly basis with career and internship opportunities. So in terms of cultural immersion, I stayed with the host family on weekends, and I also got to meet with Russian teenagers from a club of young art enthusiasts at the Pushkin State Art Museum. And through this, I truly got to experience Moscow from a local perspective. And I was part of their community and traditions and culture, and got to really experience the world outside of, you know, the suburban bubble in New Jersey that I live in. And in addition to this, I had the opportunity to attend cultural workshops, making Russian nesting dolls, art classes in a famed Russian artist workshop, and, you know, all these things were amazing, but I felt like the most important and meaningful cultural immersion experiences for me were just everyday conversations with Russian people and, you know, the little everyday habits I picked up as I was living in Russia. I felt like it was such a special privilege to experience the culture of a nation that's been so stigmatized by American society, and especially with the complicated relations between Russia and Americans today. The most important part of NISLIE for me was the cross-cultural dialogue. So every day, I was having these thought-provoking conversations about Russian-American relations and stereotypes with Russian people. And, you know, the little everyday habits I picked up as I was living in Russia. I felt like it was such a special privilege to experience the culture of a nation that's been so stigmatized by American society, and especially with the complicated relations between Russia and Americans today. The most important part of NISLIE for me was the cross-cultural dialogue. So every day, I was having these thought-provoking conversations about Russian-American relations and stereotypes with Russian people. And we were able to discuss misconceptions that we each hold and biases that we didn't even know we had. And, you know, we had... We exchanged our unique perspectives on different issues like Putin and Trump and what the relationship between our two countries means for each other, just as everyday citizens. And I felt as though I got to experience their society a little bit more by just talking with them. And we also got to discuss similarities in culture. I mean, we shared music, we shared food and TV. And through this, I developed a greater understanding that even though we live on two completely different sides of the world, how much, how many similarities we have and how we're, at the end of the day, we're all just humans who just want to see a better world. And lastly, I had 15 other students on the program with me, and a really meaningful part of the program was being able to talk to them, who came from all different backgrounds. I mean, we were able to discuss regional differences and domestic issues. There was one student from Puerto Rico, and at the time we were in Russia, there were Puerto Rican protests across the island, and I got to hear his perspective on how they directly impacted his family. And, you know, even with our president, I heard so many different perspectives from these students. Like, for example, the student from Puerto Rico, he was explaining to us, you know, how the federal government and the Trump administration affected his family through their reaction to the hurricanes. But I also talked to a student from Arizona who was positively impacted by the Trump administration's tax cuts. And we just had very meaningful discussions with... And since we were all of a certain maturity, we were able to discuss these with an understanding that, with an understanding and a certain maturity, which was really conducive to my academic development. So through NISLIE, I really realized the impact of global citizenship and how important it is that all students have this greater understanding of issues in a global context. And I think that as we look at different issues in society and we continue in our academic journeys, that we have to consider people of all different cultures and be exposed to, be exposed to all different types of, all different types of people. And through NISLIE, I discovered a passion for the Russian language and culture, as well as global affairs, diplomacy, and I'm hoping to foster these interests as I continue into college and my career. And lastly, throughout the entire program, I was always told this saying, "It's not better or worse, it's just different." And I think that applies to all students in our community here in Wayne because even though we have all these differences, it's important to realize that, you know, we're not better or worse than each other, but we just need to understand where each of us are coming from and our different perceptions of the world. So even though all these lessons I'm talking about, you know, are unique to me, they definitely apply to the students in Wayne. And I think it's really important to realize that the K-12 stage is so formative in molding student perception and their intellectual development. So I think that as we, you know, as you're all trying to improve our schools and trying to push it to prepare students for a global society, we really need to ensure that we're combating bias and misconceptions and also promoting understanding. And I wanted to highlight the importance of language learning. It was, it really helped me become a better student and a more understanding citizen. And it's really important that we push this into elementary and middle schools especially since it's a lot easier to learn language as a young student. So we can give young students the opportunity to attain fluency by starting language programs when they first enter the school system, so by the time they leave, you know, they have the opportunity to study abroad and use it in the workplace. And we can also continue our language offerings in high schools and also offer more. And it's also really important to keep cross-cultural... And I got to hear his perspective on how they directly impacted his family. And, you know, even with our president, we, I had, I heard so many different perspectives from these students. Like, for example, the student from Puerto Rico, he was explaining to us, you know, how the federal government and the Trump administration affected his family through their reaction to the hurricanes. But I also talked to a student from Arizona who was positively impacted by the Trump administration's tax cuts. And we just had very meaningful discussions with, and since we were all of a certain maturity, we were able to discuss these with an understanding that, with an understanding and a certain maturity, which was really, which was really conducive to my academic development. So through NISLY, I really realized the impact of global citizenship and how important it is that all students have this greater understanding of issues in a global context. And I think that as we look at different issues in society and we continue in our academic journeys, that we have to consider people of all different cultures and be exposed to, be exposed to all different types of, all different types of people. And through NISLY, I just, I discovered a passion for the Russian language and culture as well as global affairs, diplomacy. And I'm hoping to foster these interests as I continue into college and my career. And lastly, throughout the entire program, I was always told this saying, it's not better or worse, it's just different. And I think that applies to all students in our community here in Wayne because even though we have all these differences, it's important to realize that, you know, we're not better or worse than each other, but we just need to understand where each of us are coming from and our different perceptions of the world. So even though all these, all these lessons I'm talking about, you know, are unique to me, they definitely apply to the students in Wayne. And I think it's really important to realize that the K-12 stage is so formative in molding student perception and their, their intellectual development. So I think that as we, you know, as you're all trying to improve our schools and trying to push it to prepare students for a global society, we really need to ensure that we're combating bias and misconceptions and also promoting understanding. And I wanted to highlight the importance of language learning. It was, it really helped me become a better student and a more understanding citizen. And it's really important that we push this into elementary and middle schools especially, since it's a lot easier to learn a language as a young student. So we can give young students the opportunity to attain fluency by starting language programs when they first enter the school system. So by the time they leave, you know, they already have the opportunity to study abroad and, and use it in the workplace. And we can also continue our language offerings in high schools and also offer more. And it's also really important to keep cross-cultural dialogue a goal in our schools. And whether it be through diversity in hiring or pushing exchange programs, we can always keep, we can always keep healthy discussion a constant goal and ensure that students are being exposed to people of all different backgrounds and perspectives. And just at the end of the day, it's really important to show students that there's a world beyond Wayne, New Jersey, and that we need to, they need to be prepared for a global society. And that we foster an environment of global citizenship where students are more empathetic and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very impressive.
Thank you.
And took a lot to be, go across the world like that at your age. I don't know if I could have done it.
Yeah, it was definitely an interesting decision, but it really transformed my view on the world. And I'm so glad that I was able to have that opportunity.
That's great. Okay, Mr. Moffett, revisions to the agenda?
Yes, sir, we have a couple. The first is in the area, letter D, recognition. We'll be adding a name to the list, number two, under national merit, Wayne Hills 2020. Under national merit, commended students, we will be adding a student named Aria Nayek. The second area is under the human resources, item number three, which is an approval of leave request. Item number two, under the FMLA column, will be changing the end date to May 19th, 2020. And dates on leave will be removed and changed to NA. And that concludes the revisions.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we're going to open to the public on agenda items only. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under rule business. Do I have a mover?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Pavak and Mrs. Albanese?
Mr. President, seeing no one rise, then move to close.
Second.
Mr. Pavak and Mr. Badner. Okay, we're going to go on to section J, which is the approval of the minutes. And it's items one through three. Do I have a mover?
Mr. President, I would move all agenda items, including emergent items, on consent.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Giardano, so before we get there, then, we will read retirements since...
Through the President, could I ask the, the mover of all the items to just go up to the letter? Where are we? T. Move the entire agenda to the letter T, if you could reconsider. Including T.
I'll accept the recommendation.
Thank you.
So if I could reread that, is consent to agenda two, T, correct? All the way, including T, okay.
Well, there is no policy. Okay, questions on the agenda? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Badner?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giardano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mr. Pavak?
Yes.
And Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we'll go to section V, which is emergent school resource. Okay, let's do the retirements for ourselves. Mrs. Giardano, would you start, please?
Certainly.
This one's for Nancy Mahoney. Nancy Mahoney is a dedicated, thoughtful, and caring teacher for the Wayne Public School District for the past 17 years. Throughout her time at Wayne Valley, Ms. Mahoney has taught across all levels of mathematics. While teaching, Ms. Mahoney has exemplified what we want our educators to be, a role model and leader for our colleagues who take pride in responsibilities as a teacher. Ms. Mahoney has a strong work ethic. She's a team player. She is well-liked and respected by colleagues, administration, students, and parents. Throughout her years at Wayne Valley, Ms. Mahoney has always prepared her students for the rigor and concepts which are required in all levels of courses, and her students always found success. Furthermore, Ms. Mahoney has always looked for areas to enhance our student learning and provide them with the skills necessary to be successful. As an example of this demonstrated, demonstrated by the growth of student participation in our AP Statistics Program. During the 2016-17 school year, we had one AP Statistics course taught by Ms. Mahoney with fantastic results. 100% of her students passed the AP exam and 73% earned a five. Wanting to build on this success, Ms. Mahoney helped grow the number of students interested in taking the AP Statistics Course, accumulated in having two AP Statistics classes the past year. Ms. Mahoney worked collaboratively with her colleague who was teaching the course for the first time, and results speak for themselves. The students for both classes achieved a 96.6% passing rate on the AP exam and 70, 70% of them earned a four or a five. Another example of Ms. Mahoney's dedication to both students in school is mostly recently, she took a leadership role in the creating of a curriculum for the senior-level mathematics elective course that carries a dual enrollment credit. This course is needed, and Ms. Mahoney has done an outstanding job of working collaboratively and leading the development of it with her colleagues. For her dedication, professionalism, and her willingness to help others, an enormous thank you to Ms. Mahoney on behalf of the entire Wayne Valley High School community.
Thank you, Mr. Giardano. Mrs. Kazan?
Patricia Statuto. Mrs. Patricia Statuto has spent the last 27 years as a para-professional in the Wayne Schools. Patty began her career working in Ryerson as a one-on-one classroom para. She continued her career with programs moving to Randall Carter. At Randall Carter, she became an integral member of the staff. Last year, she was recognized as the educator of the year for Randall Carter. She is known for her compassion and great guidance as she works with the students. She is excited to be spending time with her husband Joe, her sons and daughters-in-law, and her five grandchildren. We know she is going to miss her time with the students at Randall Carter as they have become a second family. Although we wish her nothing but the best, there will be a hole in our hearts as we start the new year. Best of luck in retirement.
Mr. Babu?
Ronnie Druki. It's with great regret that I'm announcing the retirement of Ronnie Druki, a dedicated educator with 17 years of experience. Ronnie Druki has been a teacher in the Wayne School District since 2002. For the past 10 years, she has been a math and reading basic skills teacher at James Fallon Elementary School. Prior to teaching at James Fallon, she taught at all three middle schools in the Wayne School District. Before beginning her career as an educator in the Wayne Schools, Ms. Druki ran a successful training business with clients from corporate America, various schools, and individuals. She's the author of several books and developer of application software training products that have been distributed throughout the United States. Ronnie Druki has spent her career teaching a wide variety of students how to understand computers and mathematics. Mrs. Druki loves to teach and prides herself on being able to make difficult concepts easy for everyone to understand, including her principal, happens to be here this evening. She told me that. Her dedication to her students has made her an asset to the Wayne School District, and she will truly be missed. Best of luck.
Mrs. Shear?
Tina Griglak. Tina Griglak began working in the Wayne Township Public School District in September of 2014 as a licensed practical nurse within the Student Support Services Department. She has provided nursing care to many students in Pines Lake, Ryerson, and JFK Elementary Schools and Wayne Hills High School. Tina has always been an advocate for her students, and her warm, nurturing demeanor has allowed her students to succeed in the school environment. We wish Tina a very happy and healthy retirement and thank her for her services these past five and a half years.
Thank you. Mrs. Putup?
It's my pleasure to speak about Joanne McCammon this evening. Joanne has been working for over 26 years as a teacher for Wayne Township Public Schools. Her decades of service have contributed to the success of countless young people she was charged to instruct and encourage. She fostered the love of learning in so many of our most challenging students. Her approach was always empathetic but disciplined. She taught her students that education is a lifelong pursuit. Her lessons in the classroom went beyond the curriculum and encouraged them in making good life choices, being a good person and knowing their worth and value. She taught students the importance of doing your best no matter what obstacles you face. The life lessons and love that Joanne imparted to her students over the years will never be forgotten. To those of us who have worked with Joanne over the years, her dedication to the students has inspired us to follow her lead. Although we will miss you tremendously, we wish you happiness and fun as you're transitioning to the next and most important role, grandma. Congratulations, Joanne.
Mr. Babu?
Donna Matheson. It's my pleasure, as a family member of Donna, to read her retirement blurb. Donna began her career with the Wayne Board of Education in September of 1986 as a secretarial pool clerk and switchboard receptionist. In 1987, Donna became the personal register with the Human Resources Department. And in 1990, she became the confidential secretary to the personal manager. At one point, Donna was acting personal manager until a new manager was hired. Donna eventually became the administrative assistant to the director of Human Resources and has remained in the Human Resources Department for the remainder of her career. Donna has a vast knowledge of all aspects of Human Resources Department, and everyone who has worked for her is grateful for, for all that she has shared and taught for them, taught to them over the years. Since Donna has so much historical knowledge, she has always been the go-to person. Donna has been the constant, has been constant in the HR department and has always played a vital role in insurance, ensuring the department ran smoothly. Donna leaves behind a long legacy in the HR department. She leaves behind many friends and colleagues who will miss her here at the Board of Education. We all wish Donna much happiness in her retirement and hope she enjoys the extra time to spend with her wonderful family, including her two precious grandchildren. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. Committee reports. Start with Mrs. Kazan, I believe.
Thank you. This evening, the Personnel Committee met with myself, HR Director Paula Clark, Stacy Scher, and Sean Duffy. We reviewed the minutes from the October meeting. Those were approved, reviewed, questions on tonight's agenda, discussed a leave request, and certification requirements. Finally, we reviewed the contract on a new CDL program that Mr. Fennel brought to the committee because we have a bus driver shortage. And we had worked out a situation where we could pay for the certification requirements and they would have to stay with the district for two years. And it was very highly embraced, apparently. Several people stepped up to try to fill those positions. So we just reviewed the contract to make sure that if they don't stay the two years, we have a method to receive those monies back because they will be getting a valuable license from us at our cost. But it's to fill a very important need, so we were excited that that program is moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Badner?
Thank you very much. We met as a finance committee on November 14th. Present was myself, Mrs. Albanese, Mr. Duffy, Ginny DeMarco, the Assistant BA, and William Moffett, Business Administrator. We reviewed agenda items that were to be on the agenda for last week for PWS and then ultimately voted on this week. We reviewed a budget transfer. We reviewed a, which was for out-of-district placement, I believe, might have been private placements or public. And we reviewed a policy or regulation for, that would be 6112, reimbursement of federal and other grant expenditures. It was an exciting discussion about a very boring policy, quite frankly. It was just some language changes to meet code requirements. We reviewed a proposed draft budget plan, which will roll out from the business office for all of us to see, essentially with some dates and process and procedures. But that will be provided to the full board. And I don't know the date that that's coming out officially, but within the next couple of weeks. Is that accurate?
You're waiting for the budget calendar to be released?
That's right, from the state, right. But we all wait with bated breath for that. The audit was finishing up, and we expect that to be finished within the next week or two, I think, right?
Right, we, we hope to have a presentation to the board in December.
In December, okay.
Yes, but it is actually due, the actual CAFRA is due December 12th to be finished. Uh, excuse me, December 6th to be.
Okay.
Exact.
And that was about it? Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Shear?
This was the education meeting from November 14th. It was myself, Suzanne Putup, Kathy Kazan, Donna Reichman, and Suzanne Koransky. We reviewed the minutes from October 3rd. We reviewed the agenda items for November 14th. Suzanne Koransky went over our yearly nursing service plan with us. We talked about, in secondary curriculum, Film Studies II is going to be a new course for next year. And they updated the curriculum on journalism. They added college and career readiness standards and are working with William Patterson for a dual enrollment option. The Early Childhood Center, we got an update that everything's on schedule, the abatement process is happening. And they put together a committee of different resources to make sure that we are going to have an all-inclusive environment. And the 20, 2020, 2021 school calendar was discussed, reviewed by the WEA, and a draft is being moved forward to the board. One draft, I'm happy to say. Just, that's it.
Mrs. Albanese?
The Facilities and Transportation Committee met tonight. It was a supersized meeting that lasted an hour and a half, so I'll try to cover, we covered a lot of material. Present were Darrell Fennel, John Meso, Mr. Moffett, Eileen Albanese, and Michael Bubba. Under Facilities, we had an ESOP update and a report from Amaresco. It looks like we're going to be able to do Phase Two of, of that ESOP program. Within our school district, we have over 12,000 lights, based on changing light bulbs from T8s to LED bulbs with savings generated there as well as from energy efficiency. We're going to look at replacing three boilers, all at Wayne Valley. We saw a video presentation of the boilers. We were offered a tour of the Wayne Valley sub-basement, which probably won't be necessary when the video comes to the full board and you see the condition that the boilers are in. So there's a lot of work being done there to try to get that, whether it's bonded or through referendum or however we decide to go as a board, we'll be looking at making some serious upgrades to facilities at Wayne Valley, things that are in need. So more to come to the full board in a presentation sometime during the month of December. We talked about additional staffing needs. A custodian wants the Preakness School is open for children. And an ongoing need that we have at a grounds crew, with a grounds crew, for two additional groundskeepers, which will be part of budget discussion for the board this upcoming year. The, we talked about the Early Childhood Center. The abatement project will be completed by Monday. The next phase is construction. And this budget information for the Early Childhood Project will also be brought to the board at the December meeting. We talked about the district air dill unit replacements. These are heating and air conditioning units. There's an ongoing phase at five different elementary schools. And there's a replacement of oldest, most in need. It's an ongoing project to make sure that these are all, these are all updated and replaced. We talked about the tennis courts at Skyler are being converted to a storage yard. There are salt bins there right now. There's some construction going on. And that space is going to be put to better use for the, the facilities and grounds crew, which will in effect save us money in having to have snow crews on standby. We're going to be able to do that work ourselves in-house, which is going to allow us to purchase some additional equipment and do again that work ourselves rather than having to pay for it. for standby time from outside contractors. We talked about a safety grant that we've applied for before. We applied for again and have received. It's a $38,000 grant. We used it prior to purchase radios. We're going to be purchasing additional radios, and something that's called electric phase sensors, if I get that right. These are, these will be placed in every school. It's a notification system if the school loses power. So, if something happens in the middle of the night, it happens on a time when school personnel is not there. It won't be something that's discovered at 5:30 in the morning when a custodian comes to school. It will be, someone will be notified and there'll be steps taken, whether it's calling public service or whatever, to get buildings back up and running. We had a discussion about Wayne Valley, the teacher-staff bathroom upgrades. We've got some continuing information about that, and that project is ongoing. As far as transportation, we've reviewed some different policies, all of which will be viewed by the board. The bus evacuation calendar for October was all completed, and it's on tonight's agenda for approval. We had a conversation, which I think Mrs. Kazan already alluded to, the district's new driver training program. Based on that change and that innovative, creative program being brought in by Mr. Fennell, the Transportation Department is happy to announce that as of today, all positions are filled, and they actually have some additional drivers that are looking to come on board. So, that coupled with the lunchtime duties that we've offered out to bus drivers seems to be filling that need that we had for additional bus drivers. There's a department reorg and job descriptions that are being looked at by the Transportation Department, which will also come to the full board for discussion. Two new buses and two new vans were received today by the district, and there was a discussion about the upcoming, there was an update on the CPAC meeting, which is a committee put together to hear the concerns of special ed parents relating to bus routes and timing of children being dropped off. So, that's my report for tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Puttup?
The Communications Committee met this evening. Myself, Mr. Badner, Mr. Giordano, met with Dr. Toback. It was a brief but productive meeting. Of course, Dr. Toback always takes my thunder on these things. He talks about our, how well our school district did in the Newsweek polling of STEM high schools. For those of you that are not familiar with the term, it's science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And, as Dr. Toback said, there are nearly 27,000 high schools in the United States, and our rankings put us in the top 7%. I remember not long ago, we launched our one-to-one initiative, and our teachers worked very, very hard to inculcate technology into all the various disciplines, and it's paying off. And, one of our teachers, Mr. Slater, was honored as a State County Teacher of the Year, and he teaches STEM. So, all our hard work for students, parents, teachers, administrators, it really shows, so congratulations. We also discussed formation of an exploratory committee that's being formed in regard to long-term facility needs in the district. We will continue to meet in 2020 with input from stakeholders, but we can also use thought exchange to solicit ideas and to also see how some of the things that are put out there rank among the community. We also discussed briefly Policy 9400, which has to do with media relations. Every individual has a right to free speech. They speak on their own behalf, not on behalf of the district, and administration speaks for the district, and that will be coming to the board shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have a mover on emergent, V, emergent items, school resource finance?
Oh, I'll second.
Mr. Giordano and Mrs. Albanese. Okay. Questions, comments? Mrs. Kazan?
Oh, thank you. With regard to the check register, I just wanted to mention that there is a $27,347 bill from the law firm of Skorinchian-Hollenbeck. I had asked to see bills, but that request was denied. I was told I need to make an Oprah request, which, if something is on the agenda to be approved, I'm not sure I agree with that assessment. I should have at least been allowed to see the bill that was on the agenda for this evening because I have a concern. I understand that we're already at 71,000 and we're only at the first quarter, as of the end of September. It's already at 71,000. We've previously gone over cap, and I think it's important that maybe the Finance Committee take this up and review these bills and find out exactly where these legal fees are going because at this rate, we will exceed cap again, and I don't think the solution is to wait until the end of the year and keep giving an increase to the cap. I think it's important for us to analyze our legal bills and expenditures and have a discussion about that. So, I'll be voting no because I don't know what I'm paying for.
Mrs. Kazan, is that, did your comments for denying the request for information, is that directed at me?
It's not directed at anyone. I'm just saying I made a request and it was declined. I'm not speaking to anyone personally.
Was it communications between the two of us?
Well, I'd rather not say that publicly, Mr. Moffett. I'm not attacking anyone. I'm just making a general comment.
Okay.
Just very quickly, just procedurally, typically, if the board is interested in exploring a question that exists for one board member, then typically that is brought to the board, and then the board makes a determination about whether they would like to explore that particular question. So, it's really the action of at least a majority of board members to do that. So, it's not that the request was denied, it's that procedurally, we feel that ultimately the full board should make a determination about whether you want to pursue that course of action as far as analyzing legal bills because there is a significant amount of work involved, because there are, based on the way that legal bills are presented now, there is a lot of redacting that would probably be necessary, at least a certain amount. So, that's just procedurally why there was a question, and certainly that information would be shared with the board, assuming that at least five board members would like to go ahead with that analysis.
Mr. Duffy?
Just a quick question with the redacting. Is that due to the fact that board members?
No, it's due to the fact that special education billing and special ed matters and details about special ed cases are also included, which are things that typically the board doesn't get involved in.
Is there a reason that, even with the redacting, the full board can't see it?
You can, but it has to be, that kind of thing has to be approved by the full board. So, in other words, it's not a single board member that typically is able to generate a report, essentially, a billing report. So, there would be redacting, there would be some work to be done, but typically, like I said, that would come from a majority of board members who would like to see that happen, or it can come from a committee that would like to see that happen. There's different ways, but usually typically does not come from just a single, from one single board member.
Mr. Bubba?
Mrs. Kazan?
I wasn't asking for an analysis. I wasn't asking for any work to be performed. I've come into the business office when Juanita Petty was here and was allowed to just view the bills as a board member. I did not ask to see student records or student bills. As far as I know, those are separate caps and are billed separately, and I was very specific that I was only interested in the general council bills. So, I don't know what's changed between then and now, but I wasn't asking anyone to go out of their way, perform an analysis. I merely wanted to have a look for myself to see where the money was going. And I think if I'm going to have to vote on something, and I know that this is carbon statute, if something's on the agenda and I ask to see it, I'm entitled to that, but that's all I have to say on the matter. Thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
Through the chair, if I could ask the legal counsel, if we would like to, or if one board member would like to see these bills, does that need to come up to a vote? Would we need a motion, second, and vote for that, to see these legal bills?
If you just want the general ed bills, with any of the information, I might sound out.
Excuse me. If you wanted to go through and see general ed, general bills, then they may be able to be done. If there is nothing that would have to be redacted along the lines of the student information, but that would be the concern. The concern is if there's confidential student information that would be attached to those bills.
So, through the chair, would that suffice, Mrs. Kazan?
I didn't ask for student information. I was very specific.
We're not saying that you were looking for student information. What we're saying is that it would have to be sorted out and pulled out and redacted. The point is, the point is if there's a majority of board members would like to go ahead with, you know, putting together and doing the redacting and everything like that, that's, it's not a problem.
Then I'll make that motion. Bring it through a full vote then.
Second.
That has to come in new business, correct? Because it's after, it's not part of this, so we could do that in new business.
Can I just clarify from my own knowledge? When you're operating something, that comes from the public, correct?
So...
So, typically, the way I'm, the way I'm looking at it is a board member wouldn't have, like if I wanted information, and I'm not even just talking legal, I'm just talking in general, if I wanted information, I don't have to go through the same process that the public does. I don't, I wouldn't have to, not if it's something we discussed as a board, why would I have to operate? Sometimes you do. Okay, well, I...
I guess, so the answer is, it may depend, but generally speaking, backup and information that allows you to make a decision about a vote is something that you generally are entitled to, right? However...
Okay. I'm just trying to clarify between the public operating and board members.
But, when it comes to something like legal bills, and legal bills that are commingled, so the distinction here is that ultimately, there's a lot of work, because the request goes back quite a distance, right? The request was back till, what was it? So, the beginning of this fiscal year. So, then you have to go back through all those legal bills. You have to go through, and you have to review every page.
So, really, legal bills might be one of the only things that would have to be?
Generally speaking, most of it is sort of self-explanatory or very plain.
Like exact and everything, that's, we're privy to that information.
Any type of, like, energy bill, whatever, like those types of things, generally speaking, just when it, when it comes to legal bills, that's where it gets a little trickier.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Puttup?
Would these have been discussed in Finance Committee?
Do you want me to respond?
Sure. Mr. Badner, you're the chair.
The question was, would these have been discussed in the Finance Committee, not if it wasn't on the agenda specifically? So, you know, right. I mean, I don't have a problem as the Chair of Finance, you know, to ask if that's something that at least five members of the board are interested in doing, you know, I would be interested in seeing that if it's a concern, so that could be prepared and then developed for the Finance Committee meeting and then shared with the full board. It would take some time, I understand, legal bills in that they are, you know, commingled with maybe some confidential matters. It's not just separated out as separate. So, that's why I do understand that the nature of the work that has to go into it. So, I don't, you know, I defer to the President in terms of the motion and the second and new business, you know, and if that's the case, then I'm fine with that too. I just don't know the procedure necessarily, but ultimately, I have no problem as the Finance Chair of doing that. If it's a concern for some board members, then, you know, it's something we can look at.
Okay. So, we'll vote on these items now, and then in new business, we can introduce a motion.
Through the President, Mr. President. Make a motion now to pull V1 off the agenda for the night.
Mr. President?
Mr. Badner?
Just speaking as a Finance Chair, that would be a problem because all the bills are on there. If you want to redact, or not redact, if you want to make a motion to pull a specific check from the register, I think that could be allowable if the majority votes for it. That would, you know, be something different than pulling the whole item.
That's fine, that'd be my motion.
Okay, so we're going to... Do we have a check number?
Not at the moment. So, I'm just trying to understand the resolution. So, we have the motion in front of us, which was to move V proposed, and then there was a motion, or at least a...
To pull one check from the register.
Or legal bills.
To pull one check from the ID, is that what I'm, is that what we're doing?
Yes, that's...
So, you're voting on that separately? Like, you're voting on everything else, and then you'll vote on that particular check?
We'll vote on everything else first, then we'll vote on that specific check. Because we have to vote on all the other checks first. So, we're voting on the other items, and then we'll vote on the motions to pull the check after. All right, yeah. So, okay, so can we have a roll call on everything but that check, please?
Yes, sir. Mrs. Scher?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Badner?
I'm going to vote no to number one, yes to the rest.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Oh, yes, and on the check register, I'm abstaining on my name.
Mr. Puttup?
Yes.
Sorry, Mrs. Puttup. Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
A motion carries.
Excuse me. I meant to abstain. I think I said no.
Oh, yes, you said no. I'll switch.
I've abstained so many times. I just said no. I don't know why I said no.
Okay. Now, now we're going to vote on the check for the legal bills. So, can I have a roll call, please?
Okay, I'm sorry. Could you please state what we're, then, what the vote is? It's for that particular check?
Right, it's to approve that check for dispersment.
So, if...
It's to pull that check.
Right. So, if, right, so if it fails, it will not be dispersed, we'll hold the check.
Just for clarity, until there's further discussion on, until the board has clarity and full transparency of what we're being actually billed for. Correct?
I guess so, if that's the way you want to present it, if that's your words.
Okay, so, a yes vote is a pay the check vote? Because now I'm confused.
No, if it fails, it's going to be held, but as Mr. Duffy is suggesting, the language...
Okay, so it has to be, we have to vote yes then to pulling the check. So, it's not a fail?
Well, that's what I was asking about before. We're not pulling it now, we're just voting on the check to be approved for dispersment. But, if that's, if we're going to be pulling it now for, okay, so then I'll...
Yes.
For clarity, a yes is to give the check out, to pay the bill. A no is to hold the check until everyone can see the bills.
Right, that is what the resolution is in front of us. There are other ways to handle it, but yes, that's one way.
Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Badner?
I'm going to ask for a timeout. A yes is to pay the bill. A no is to say no to paying the bill until we review the actual bill. Okay, yes.
Okay, so, a roll call with Mrs. Albanese?
My understanding of the bill, of the check currently, is the work has already been done. We have a contract with the law firm. At this point, we have no reason to assume that there's any issue with the check, so I'm voting for us to pay the check. I have no problem with the Finance Committee, or through the Finance Committee, to the rest of the board to review bills or to review where we are in the process of achieving a cap, but there's no indication that there's anything about the check other than work's been done and we have a contract, so I'm voting yes to release the check.
Mr. Badner?
I thought I voted, but that's okay. I'm going to do it again, and I'm going to try to be as eloquent as my fellow board member. I can't actually, but I'll try. The point of the matter is, ditto. I mean, the fact is that the work's been done, so I want to release the check, pay the check, so yes, but as the Chair of the Finance Committee, I have no problem having that check redacted, I mean, that bill redacted to further review it. But, I'm not... But I'm not going to hold up a payment to the law firm at this point.
Yes, I apologize for taking the timeout instead of the yes. I interpreted it as a timeout. Mr. Duffy?
My problem here is we're going to pay a bill and then we're going to review the work that's done after we paid the bill. So my vote is for no. I'd like to review the bill before I pay it.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
I'm not voting no because I don't think the firm deserves to be paid. I realize the work has been done. I'm voting no because I was not granted the opportunity to review the expenditure. So I'm voting no. Thank you.
Mr. Pavlak?
Voting yes. We have a contractual obligation. And I'm not going to put this board in a legal position where we breach the contract. If someone had information that something was inappropriate we billed, I would be more than happy to vote no. But based on the information that I've just received within the last two minutes, I have to vote yes to pay the bill.
Mrs. Shear?
I'm going to abstain because I...I admit I'm confused. And but I do feel that if a board member is asking for information, that they should...they shouldn't be sent to an open request unless it's absolutely necessary. They should be able to see that information. So I do want the Finance Committee to...that part I get. I want them to look at.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Mrs. Putup didn't vote.
Oh, Mrs. Putup, my apologies.
Mr. Putup voted, that's wrong.
See that?
We had 10 votes tonight.
Mrs. Putup?
If it's been brought up, I would like to see a review done. However, you're getting my most eloquent yes right now.
Thank you. Recorded as a yes. Motion carries.
Okay. This time, we're going to open to the public on agenda items, or non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens to comment on any topic. The residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under all business. Can I have a mover?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Mr. Pavlak and Mrs. Albanese. Welcome, Mr. Clipka.
Mark Clipka, 48 Pine, Chris Harris. I would just like to start off with just a, I guess, just taking notice between the minutes that are on the webpage and the video. If you were to read the minutes and watch the video, you'd get two different answers because in the minutes, it's not everything that is being asked or by the public or the response by either the board or the administration. So I just wanted to let that be known. Okay. Back in June, I came up here and I spoke of the referendum in reference to full day kindergarten. And Mrs. Kazan decided to speak and try to explain things. I think there was some misrepresentation. I do have it on my phone, the actual voice, if you wanted to hear it, but...so I'm not going to quote it per se, but I know Mrs. Kazan said the referendum wasn't to ask the voters for permission for full day kindergarten. She mentioned that it was asking to increase the budget because it was over the 2% to 4%. I have a copy of both referendums from what was sent to the public, okay? And I will read from the first one. Wayne Township Public Schools question. Resolve that there shall be raised an additional $2,114,250 for general funds for the ensuing school year 2015-2016. These taxes will be used exclusively, okay? The word exclusive, for the expansion of the district's existing full day, I mean, half-day kindergarten program to a full day. So please, don't spin it. You are asking for funds to extend exclusively to be used. That was the first one. Second one. Question. Wayne School District resolve that there should be raised an additional $2,96,885 for the general fund for the ensuing school year 2016-2017. These taxes will be used exclusively for the expansion of the district's existing half-day kindergarten program to full day. We have to stop playing politics, okay? Public was asked, are the funds going to be used for full day kindergarten? They said no. But again, like I said, the board voted for it. So we have to make sure we get it right. Secondly, over the last two years, I've been coming up here and asking about the eligibility of the Wayne Hills football players. I've been told by Superintendent Toback and counsel to many of my questions, or multiple, they couldn't answer them because of litigation or legal matters. And I always said, I'm waiting to see what legal matters are going to be there. Then in February of 19, Superintendent Toback stated, in reference to the eligibility of the Wayne Hills football players, there is no legal litigation, there's no plaintiff or defendant. So which is it? Was there a legal matter that you couldn't answer my questions or there is no legal We have hanging over at 50 Ellis in our meeting room, a plaque, and I'm going to read what it says. Integrity. If it is not right, do not do it. If it is not true, do not say it. Okay? So which was the truth? Here, integrity, transparency, and honesty. And we have it hanging right over there, 50 Ellis. It's a disgrace.
Does anyone want to pause?
Second. Mrs. Kazan and Mr. Pavlak. Okay, whole business? New business? Mrs. Kazan, I see you. No, it's okay. I saw the hand. We're good.
Okay. Well, there's a delegates' assembly session on Saturday and from what I understand, based on the rules of engagement for our professional organization, that's something that the board should at least give our advice to whoever the delegate is as to how we wish the vote to be handled. I don't think there...well, there was one on in May, but I forgot to bring it up, but there's another one on Saturday's agenda. And I was just wondering if anyone had a chance to look at it and if perhaps we couldn't let Mr. Bubba know where we stand on that. I particularly feel that Hillsborough's resolution should be approved. It's a unique situation and it's kind of complex as to how their state aid is being delivered and their formula. It's not so much that they're being reduced, but that they can't raise the local fair share even without going above the cap. So they're...and whatever happens here ultimately just changes NJ SBA's policy for what we lobby for. It doesn't change the law. We don't have that ability. But my point is that I would be interested in supporting their cause and in...it's not like the districts that were losing state aid because they were overpaid. This is a little more nuanced than that. If anyone's had the chance to read it, I don't know. So it's up to you. I mean, I think we should at least give Mr. Bubba our opinion. I'm a yes. I don't know. Have you read the resolution?
Yes, I have the resolution and I would also support it.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, and I really wanted to speak to the young lady who gave such an amazing presentation. I mean, she never used the word um once. I'm just amazed at that. I can't even speak as well as her and I was just so impressed by her and her bravery to leave this country and spend summer in a place where she didn't even speak the language. I mean, her parents must be amazingly proud of her. And I thought that was a really great program that our State Department offers. I didn't even know it existed and I was happy she came back and reported that to us. So good for you, Jenna. And happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. I have one thing for new business. The CPAC Committee, the Special Education Parents Association, has asked that a board member sit on the committee. So Mrs. Putup, Mrs., has graciously volunteered to sit on that committee. So we thank you for that. And that's what I have for new business. And I'm sure, Mr. Duffy, you had something for new business, correct?
I'd just like to request that whether through the Finance Committee or whatever, that there is a itemized bill that we can review from the attorneys, if that's possible of...
Here's the thing, it just doesn't need to necessarily come to a vote. I mean, the Finance Committee can review the bills and it's that simple. It sounds like the Chair's agreeing to go ahead with that.
That's fine. Absolutely no problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Badner. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Mrs. Shear?
If I could just interrupt for a moment, did we want to take a vote on signing or volunteering Mrs. Putup to the committee or is...
I'm going to make a comment before that.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to support Mrs. Putup to be on that committee because I love her. But I do want to put it out there that I am a board member and I am a special ed teacher for the past 13 years and I volunteered to be on the committee and I was denied. So I just want to put that out there. But I will give you 100% support, Mrs. Putup.
Through the chair to Ms. Stacy there. A lot of us volunteer for positions that don't get there.
So you could use a vote now?
Okay.
If that's the board's pleasure, yes. Right, so the resolution is to volunteer Mrs. Putup to serve on a CPAC committee?
I don't even think you need to have a vote for that.
Okay.
Mr. Pavlak?
Just all our students tonight, just listening to the schools that they apply to and hopefully get into, you know? It's just amazing. And it's one of the few times in the year we get to sit up here and really able to absorb the things we do and the curriculum that we approve and everything for the schools to see the outcome of it. And it's just astonishing every year when you sit here, listen to these merit scholars and everyone else and even the end of the year, when we look at the schools which our students are accepted to and the amount of scholarships that they receive, it is amazing. And it's really a great experience to sit here and see it come to fruition, the things we do up here. It's not always pleasant to sit up here, as we all know, but it's wonderful. Mr. Clipka, I'll say one thing about the minutes and the video. Minutes are not verbatim. The videos and the minutes have the same retention period, so if there's ever a question to the minutes, the exact videos are retained for the same amount of time as the minutes. Happy Thanksgiving. Have a happy safe to everybody who's traveling.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Does the motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
So Pavlak, Mr. Duffy.